Minutes of December 3rd.
I approve.
I've got a motion by Marcia to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
I've got a second by Jim and Tom. Any further discussion? All of those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. Start the public meeting. Of note, we had an executive meeting at 6:00 to receive information about interview prospective employees as well as pending or threatened litigation. So that occurred before this meeting?
Mr. President.
Yes.
Before we get to the remainder of the agenda, I would like to make a motion to reconsider the council's vote to offer the town manager position to Laura Parker without going out to an open search.
All right. We have a motion.
Second.
And it's been seconded by Mr. Nguyen. Any other discussions? Further consideration? All those in favor of Tom's motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Well, that's a 3-2 vote, is that correct? Okay, so the motion has carried.
Mr. President, I'd like to make another motion. That if Laura agrees, we appoint Laura Parker as the interim town manager at the full pay grade of the real town manager we have today until we finish the search and choose somebody for that position.
Okay.
That's if Laura agrees.
We have a motion by Tom to appoint Laura as the interim town council member at the full town council, or town council, town manager, sorry. I've been screwing that up for two weeks. Appoint Laura the interim town manager at the current town manager's rate. Is that correct?
Yes.
Do we have that motion? Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a second. Further discussion? If this is the case, then I suggest that we also look at expediting this process of interviewing, advertising, interviewing, and moving on with the town business, but I have no qualms about the interim tag and the aforementioned salary if it meets with Laura's approval. So having said that, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I second.
I second. Okay. Moving too fast. All those in favor of Tom's motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, I guess the next thing is if it meets the approval of Laura Parker.
Happy to serve you.
Thank you. We appreciate that. All right. And since we're on this topic, if I may reach the subject, kind of expedite the timeline. I think we should maybe in the next week or so, or by our next meeting, establish a timeline for interviews and the whole process. Carry, is that appropriate, or do we need to, should we move a little quicker?
I think I can prepare something for you. Your next meeting's the 27th, 6:00. I think your agenda will probably accommodate that. So time like we put together and disseminated and come to terms.
Is there any way we could expedite that and then get consensus? I know we're running into Chris, that's one of the problems, we're running into Christmas.
Yeah, it is.
Can anybody see a faster process? Hearing none, then if you can have something for us by the 27th. All right, let's move on to the wastewater expenditure request. Jerry Crisp.
Good evening. Last month, November 1st, we reported an overflow on the south side of town. The pipe had been camered in the past and we knew it had some defects that need repaired. However, there's a large canopy of trees on top of it, so I need those trees cleared in order to have a work zone.
All right, we have a department expenditure request of $17,550. I need to recuse myself because some of this work will be done on property that I own, and I feel that it's most prudent if I not vote on this particular matter.
I'd make a motion for $17,550 capital expenditure request, wastewater.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Marcia. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 4-0.
Thank you very much.
Economic Development Commission appointment, Gary.
This commission that we're discussing is actually owned and operated by Hendrix County Commissioners. So the appointment that we're looking at is an individual to represent Danville on that, and they're asking the council their preference. In the past, it's been Greg Van Leer, who's here in the audience tonight. I believe he's been in consultation with President Nielsen. I just asked him, and he's willing to continue service, so I would recommend council appointment of Greg Van Leer.
All right. Any discussion? Any questions you want to ask Greg? We'll put them on the spot. I did, I have spoken with Greg when Jenny let me know that this position was up, and through a little bit of arm twisting, he did agree. It didn't take much, so I would make the motion that we appoint Greg Van Leer to the Economic Development Commission.
Second.
Second by Dennis. All in favor signify by saying, oh, further discussion? All of those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Greg? Love them aboard again. All right, on to the interlocal agreement for an SRO 2. Jenny.
This is the agreement between the Town of Danville and Danville Community School Corporations to provide a second school resource officer in the Danville Community School Corporation. This mimics the agreement that we have for our first SRO, and this is for the school year of 2018/2019.
So the chief, this person is going to start second semester, or are they going to start, this is our last week, are they going to?
There will be someone there after the Christmas break in January, sign there, and then the certificate that's been approved and official offer of employment, once they're through all the testing and then training, as required, be assigned to that location.
Do you have an approximate start date then?
Back in skills, it's January the 7th or January the 8th.
Will it be this officer?
No, it will not be.
When will this officer? That is my question.
Yeah, I can't tell the exact dates, I'm not sure how long the training will last. It'll train to a couple of weeks at the academy, so I don't have an exact date. If I had to say not till 2019, beginning of that school year, 2019, 2020.
Okay. But there'll be a second person acting as an SRO starting?
As soon as they get back to Christmas break.
Okay, second semester.
Same with Rafe, whatever they pay.
Okay. And that person, we working with Matt?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, I guess we are.
I move we approve the interlocal agreement between the Town of Danville and the Danville School Corporation regarding the second SRO.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to hire a second SRO. Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries 5-0. We have a second SRO. Thank you. All right, ordinance number 25, 2018, the 2019 salary ordinance. Jenny.
This ordinance I have prepared for you has the increase in our insurance premiums for the town employees, which is the 8.3%, and it allows for a 2% raise across the board for all full-time employees, plus the raise that was voted on for the council in the budgeting process last summer. I have given you also a summary of our 2019 budget, where our cash reserve will be for each fund, and along with the number of employees that are on the different healthcare plans that we offer for employees, and how much the increase for them will affect their payroll as well as, I've taken five positions, and with the 2% increase, how much they will be receiving, so that you can tell the difference between the insurance premiums and the raise.
We have ordinance number 25, 2018, an ordinance establishing the 2019 salaries and other compensations for officials, employees, and appointees at the Town of Danville. What's the pleasure of the council?
I'd like to say something.
Please.
I know I talked to you today about the 2% and the 1%, and you've gave me some information here. If you could just retell me that information in public here.
Sure.
About the percentages, and I was under the assumption it was going to put us over on the budget.
The revenue that is anticipated for 2019 versus the expected expenditures, there is a negative with that, so we will be tapping into our cash balances. But our overall cash reserve for the general fund is still at 18%. And then I have allocated the other funds, like the edit fund is at 103% cash reserve. So when you look at the funds that help sustain the salary and wages expenditure, the overall percentage retained for those will be 49% cash reserve.
Okay, and that's acceptable then?
Yes.
Thank you.
Your guys' goal has always been 20%. We are going a little bit lower than that, with the general fund being at 18%. To sustain raises and to keep going at the rate that we are going, we're going to have to look at making cutbacks in, you know, any area that we can look at, forecasting. When we discussed the budget this summer, I suggested that, and you know, I'll continue to suggest that as we move forward, you know, looking at the budget, so that we can get, you know, sustain our cash reserve and keep it where we want it and where our goal is.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Do we have to suspend the rules if we want to act on this tonight?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do I have a motion to suspend the rules, or shall we just introduce it?
I move we suspend the rules to act on ordinance 25, 2018.
We have a motion to suspend the rules. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Further discussion? All in favor of suspending the rules for ordinance 25, 2018 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Rules have been suspended. What's the pleasure of the council on this ordinance? Come on, people, we've suspended the rules to deal with it, let's deal with it.
Jenny, this is for a 2% increase.
Yes.
Exactly.
Yes. I move we approve and adopt ordinance 25-2018 salary ordinance for 2019 that includes a 2% increase for the employees.
We have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Jim. Further discussion? I think this is good, our employees work very hard for what we pay them, but we're going to have to tighten the belts. Some of the projects are probably going to have to go by the wayside so we can beef up. I get a little nervous when we get underneath that 20%. Now that we're at 18, we're going to have to be very prudent on where we spend our money, so we can maintain our people and keep paying them a good wage.
Can I make a comment?
Of course.
When you refer to dropping below that 20%, it used to be that we looked at the overall cash reserves, and the target amount that we would try to arrive at would be 25% overall cash reserves. When Jenny refers to the 18%, that's for the general fund only, and the overall reserves, she said, were 49. So I think we're very prudent in making this decision, and I think that it's the best way to reward our employees that work really hard for the town, so I think it's just a matter of how we used to review it as opposed to how we're looking at it right now.
Any other comment? All right. Is that the motion? I believe we have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Ordinance 25 passes. Merry Christmas. All right, 2019 host budget, Jenny.
Okay, the department heads and Gary and Lauren, myself, Matt, to go over our annual expenditures for the host budget, and I have provided you with our suggestions, and we have made a lot of cutbacks in annual expenditures in order to be able to do some different priority projects that we feel are important, and I did a list of those for you as well, as well as a cash balance sheet that shows you our cash as of the 17th, and what our ending balance will be December 31st of 2019, if all annual expenditures are spent along with the priority projects.
Questions for Jenny. Thank you. Okay. On to the department heads.
I need a motion to approve the.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Monday night football. All right, so we need a motion to approve this.
Some moved.
Got a motion by Dennis. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Tom. Further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, now on to water.
Mike?
Sir.
I have a request to speak from Gail Tharp at 302 North Point Court.
Okay, I was going to do that under public comment, but we can do that now if you'd like.
Yeah, I thought it'd be better underneath the entire agenda.
You mean they don't want to stay for an hour of department meetings? That's fine. Is that okay with the rest of the council? Do we have consensus to go ahead and? All right, Gail. So anything else, Gary? Okay. And start with water again. Jimmy.
Good evening. The, just have a couple of things. Right now, we're, our asset management program, we're about 65% done. If you see on the weekends and stuff, if you see Mr. Wicker walking around town with a story pole and a gadget on top, he's doing the locations for our asset management, so don't get too nervous if he's in your backyard or whatever, but that's what he's doing. And then second of all, even though the weather doesn't reflect it's getting cold, it's supposed to be winter time, we'll have in our webpage, water, winter weather, water tips, just in case when it does get cold. So we'll have a few people calling us with frozen water. That's all I have. Have any questions from the town council?
Any questions for Jim?
Good, thank you.
Okay, wastewater.
I provided my report, and there's just one part I'd like to go over with you guys, and that's our permit modification to discharge wastewater into the creek, clean wastewater. If you remember, when we got our permit, it had copper and lead limits that were not fair to the Town of Danville that the state was imposing. We did a lot of sampling and testing of our water to prove what our limit should be, and our limit was actually removed from the current draft permit, so that's really good news. The only thing is, is there's a comment that they're asking the permitee or the council to look at ways of reducing lead, or I'm sorry, copper entering the treatment plant, and that's not possible, so I would like to comment back to item that, to remove that sentence. That's all I've got.
Any questions for Jerry? Okay, yeah.
Thank you.
Good luck with IDM. Fire Department.
I'd like to start off on behalf of the men and women of the Fire Department, thanking the council for the recognition of the efforts of all town employees and providing a 2% pay increase for 2019. Thank you very much. I know my employees will appreciate it greatly. We concluded the training at the structure at 200 East and Main Street. It was a huge success. We had the structure actually the whole summer, so it was nice. We were training it quite a bit, but on the three days that we did live burns, we were able to do 21 evolutions, which is almost unheard of in a, in a structure that small. The only issues we had, we had one firefighter get struck in the temple with a board that had came off the side of the structure, and then on the extension of the south side of the building, we may have put a little too much water on one of the evolutions, so it didn't burn very well the day we set it on fire, but we were able to take a track-o and push it in and finally get it to go, but I just want to in front of the council, thank Hendrix Regional. It's so unusual to get a building like that, let alone where the property owner has no timeline. They just said, yeah, burn it, do whenever you want it. So it was nice having that structure all summer long to be able to do training in. So that's all I have, make myself available for any questions.
Question?
Thank you. Enjoy your vacation. Thank you.
Steve Raining.
Mr. President, town council members, I want to bring your attention that on December the 11th, I sent each of you an email advising that during the December 10th Police Commission meeting, the police commissioners approved my recommendation to extend a conditional offer of employment to Megan Combs. That email contained my letter of recommendation to the police commission, as well as a letter from Danville Middle School Principal Marcia Webster. Principal Webster was on the chief's interview committee along with Marion County Sheriff's Department Captain Jim Cutler and myself. Also, in that email, there were letters of recommendation from Lake Forest Park Police Department Chief of Police Stephen Sutton and Sergeant Mike Harden, Support Service Division Commander. Megan has been a full-time police officer in Oklahoma and Washington. Today, she completed her physical that's required by PERF and is scheduled for her psychological test tomorrow. Once I receive the results from those two tests, the required documentation will be submitted to PERF for their review, and if you don't have any questions, at this time, I'd like to introduce you to the new officer that we've made a conditional offer to, this is Megan here, this is her son Tucker, and her daughter Kaylee, also have another sister, I do not know her name, but I know, but I know they reside in Greencastle with Megan's husband, Richard, who is an executive for a company that has relocated him to the Greencastle area. And we're very fortunate, she, as you can see in what I presented you, she comes with a great deal of experience, as well as very highly recommended. And again, was not trying to evade your question, when somebody's going to start, I'm going to assume she's going to get through everything, and then get through her training, get through her school resource officer training as well, and maybe two or three weeks that she needs to go to the academy just for refreshers, so I don't anticipate that being this school year, but I've met with Dr. Schaefer, and I'm meeting with him again tomorrow morning to finalize this. So not being evasive, but that's kind of where it's at. I anticipate 2019, 2020 school year, the guy right there will be there helping to protect and serve the staff as well as the students there, too. In your packet, I also provided a letter that states a offer had been extended to Brandon Costin for the position of parking enforcement officer. You can see in there, Brandon's way overqualified, he has a bachelor's degree, he has been accepted into Indiana University Law School for night classes come August of next year. He would have been here tonight, but he's currently out of state visiting relatives. I talked to him a couple of days ago. During the month of November, I attended an educational summit that was sponsored by Congressman Todd Raketa, and that summit addressed school safety and school security. If you would go to your stat sheet, ones that I will bring to your attention for the month of November, we had 712 runs, which ended up taking six reports out of those 712. Six reports is low for us for a month. Of the 712 runs, 326 of those were traffic stops. We made 39 criminal arrests for the month, as well as two OWI arrests. Any question on any of that?
Any questions for Chief Raining?
I want to thank the town council for approving the funding for the hiring of two police officers in 2018, and as well as funding the position for an additional SRO in 2019, and the 2% salary increase is much appreciated, and I'm sure it is by my entire department. In closing, I want to say a thank you to Marcia Lynch and Jim Stevens for their service to the town of Danville, especially the last two years and five months that I've been here. I've appreciated the time you spent in researching and making hard decisions, as well as anybody else that's been on this board. I appreciate the support you've given the police department, as well as myself, and I wish you well as you guys pursue your other interests. Glad to take any questions, if you have any.
Any questions for Chief? Thank you, Chief. All right. Laura, planning?
No.
Nothing tonight? Okay. Stormwater?
Gary's sick.
Ooh. Public works? Great. I think I'm going to basketball game soon as get beat.
At the DPW, we have been working on the budget and getting that finalized for the end of the year. The two new mowers that we requested did get here, still waiting on wheels. The other mower was delivered to the Fire Department, and the other one was traded in, so that has been completed. Sherwood Drive, that was part of the paving project, was completed this last week, so the paving for the year is complete now. We've done some patching this last week, and we are still picking up leaves, so Jim, thank you for your years of service with the town and being over the department. Any questions?
Any questions for Ray?
How you doing, Ray?
You're doing good.
I asked a question a couple of meetings ago about the yellow lines there going on Columbia Street, and I think the answer was there weren't any, and I got about 10 calls of people saying there were yellow lines on there before the blacktop went down. It's on Google, and that, do you remember that?
I remember you asking, and I remember saying there weren't any, but as far as checking on Google, no, I have not done that.
No, no, what I mean, there used to be yellow lines a couple of months ago before we paved.
I will check into that.
The yellow lines are still on the bridge. In Google, you can see the yellow lines going through the park, and I think the comment was made that we don't put yellow lines, and we haven't put yellow lines in the city roads, or the town roads.
We will check into that, Tom.
But that been yellow line for a long time. Okay, thank you.
Ray, how long are we going to continue to pick up the leaves?
The program was over the 7th. We're still picking them up. They're still raking them out, even though it's over.
Okay, so you'll pick them up for another week or two?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Thanks.
Thanks, Ray.
Okay, last and certainly not least, Will?
All right, you have your Town Council report in front of you. Winterland's going great. We got the new gatehouse out. I don't know if anybody's seen it. It's nice. We've got Bluetooth inside and speakers, all kinds of stuff, and it's warm, so that helps out. We got the final, well, not the final drawings, but we got the specs for the amphitheater all done. Now we're working on drawings and hoping to have a pretty picture for you, not probably by the end of the year meeting, but the first of the year meeting. So excited about that. Also, thank you to the Public Works Department. They came out and helped us do some traffic control during Winterland on two Saturdays with me. And then also, I want to thank Jim. Served on the park board for a while. I really appreciate that. We did a lot of good things together, and I appreciate that. Also, Marcia, same thing. You had three years on the park board or something, too, so I appreciate that. We've done a lot of stuff in my tenure here, and you guys are courtesy of that as well, so. And then also, thank you for the 2 percent raise, everyone. Appreciate that. That's all I have.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other, any public comment? Okay. Moving on. Gary?
I just want to wish well back to Jim and Marcia, having open Monday nights now. So, you know, I'll have some open Monday nights. If you want to play some euchre, let me know.
Start a whole euchre club.
But, but you've been an asset to the Town of Danville in your term, and I for one appreciate the dedication that you have, and wish you well in the future.
All right, Laura? All right, Jenny?
Thank you.
Tom?
Oh, okay.
Dennis?
Gary's sentiments, exactly.
Jim?
Been a quick four years.
Did you think I'd be the longest, is that what you said?
No, I'm a place of honor here.
Thank you, I appreciate that, because I do have some prepared remarks, as you can imagine. Would you expect anything less? Before I move to my remarks, I do want to make the comment that, you know, with all the action that's been taken over the last few meetings, I, you know, my opinion won't matter in the future, but I do want it to be said that I don't think that whatever the process is, however long it takes, you won't find anybody that's more qualified for the position than Laura Parker. And I think if she's given the opportunity to demonstrate that, she'll prove that completely, so. And forgive me, because I did write these down, because this, this experience has meant a lot to me, and I, I probably will get emotional, and I'll forgive, forgive me for that. But for months now, I have thought about what I would say tonight. I've told everyone to bring popcorn, but you all want to leave before midnight, so I will keep it short. First of all, I want to thank Gary, Laura, and the, and the department heads for all the, and all the employees, for being so great to work with over the last 10 years. Danville's a great place to live, work, and play, and it's because of all of you that that's the case. I want to wish Gary a great retirement. After all the years that you've given to Danville, you deserve it. More years than I want to admit, when you and I went to high school in this building, we would have never dreamt that we would end up here working together as we have, so. I want to wish you well, and thank you for the time we've worked together. I've learned so much over the last 10 years. I've always taken my role as a Town Council member very seriously. Worked very hard to do the research, the classes, and the fact-finding. Always conducting myself and the vote, and, and voting in a way that I believed was the best for the majority of the Town of Danville, the people of Danville. I'm proud of my service for the people, and I can sleep at night knowing that I have never compromised my integrity, my honesty, or my values. I have tirelessly promoted this town, both from a positive and a professional perspective. I have no regrets. There are times that tough decisions have to be made, and some people are not going to like them. That doesn't mean that they are not the right thing to do. I have said in the past that if I lost an election because of doing the right thing, so be it. I can live with that. Sadly, I have lost friends because of some of those tough votes, but I'm glad to say that because of my time on the council, I have developed many more lifelong friendships that are built on mutual respect. I wish the new council members good luck. Please take every opportunity to learn everything that you can. This job is not just an every-other Monday job. You are a reflection of the town in every aspect of your life. I would ask that you cast your votes based on the facts, as they relate to the best interests of the town and the people that live here, and not let others influence you. You represent almost 10,000 people, not those that are just on chatter. Talk to people every chance you get, hear both sides, review the facts, and then make your decision. I want to thank the Board and membership of the Chamber for their support while I've had this dual role. I still believe that it has been a win-win for both the town and the Chamber. I've always believed that I represented the Town of Danville, regardless of which hat I wore. And I look forward to leading the Chamber for another year until I retire. Although my work for the town has been such a passion, it is not my first. I'm so blessed to have such a wonderful, supportive family and terrific friends. I thank them all for being on my side, for being by my side for the last 10 and a half years. In the good times and the bad, they have always been there for me. As I look forward to this next chapter of my life, they will continue to be first and most important in my life, and I will now have more time to dedicate to them. With that, I want to wish you all a very Merry Christmas, and wish all of you and the town a great 2019. Thank you.
Wow, that's a tough one to follow. I just wanted to wish Jim a belated birthday, happy belated birthday.
Thank you.
And the town has a couple of awards for Jim and Marcia for their years of service here. Jim?
Appreciation, by the way. Our four years, congratulations.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Appreciate you, bud.
We'll get some pictures here.
Okay.
And Marcia, course 10 years.
Thank you so very much.
Having said that, Merry Christmas to all, and to all a good night. Motion for the claim docket.
Move to approve.
I have a motion by Marcia, a second by Dennis. All in favor of approved claim docket, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned. Good night. Oh, we need some pictures.